I will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McAdavis Place, St. George. Good evening and welcome to the February 2024 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. This is our 14th official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte. We have 27 more to go until the end of this council's term. I welcome all those that are attending here tonight and those that are watching us on television or on their cellphone or computer. And I wish to welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight. And we have Florence Mitchell in the back and of course their star, Vicky Hogarth, doing the camera tonight, so welcome here tonight. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight.
I'll move to accept.
Counselor Lee. And I need a secondary for that. Counselor Thompson? And I'm just going to remind council tonight, just to keep turning your mics on and speak louder. These folks here can't hear too well because we don't have the speaker working too good. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I don't feel like I'm yelling at you. You can move the chairs a little closer if you like. You can move them up closer.
You don't want me that close.
Well, that's all right. No, I'm all right. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. And do we have any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. We're going to move on to three, which is conflict of interest. This is your opportunity to declare any conflict of interest tonight. If there's none, I'm going to move on to adoption of the minutes. We have quite a few here tonight. We're going to start with the January 17th, 2024 Special Meeting of Council. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of January 17th. Counselor McCrory? And secondary is Counselor Thompson again. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. That moves us to four B, which is the January 23rd, 2024 Closed Meeting of Council. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for that meeting. Now, Counselor Thompson. Secretary Counsel McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. We go to four C, which is the January 24th Meeting. I look for a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of January the 23rd. Oh, Counselor McGee. Secondary would be Counselor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's pass unanimously. February the 6th, I'm looking for a motion for the meeting of February the 6th, 2024. Counselor Thompson, great, thank you. Secondary would be Counselor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. That brings us to four E, February the 13th. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of February the 13th, 2024. Counselor McCrory. Second by Counselor Thompson. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. That's it for minutes. Okay. We're up to number five tonight. Business arising out of the minutes. I don't think there's anything here tonight. Number six is delegations. There are none tonight. And at number seven, we are at the Department Reports, and I'm going to go to Mr. Gedet tonight for the General Government Report.
Thank you, your worship. General Government Report for January 2024. Finance. We finalized the number of project claims relating to past projects funded with the province, completed required forms, processes for borrowing related to last year's borrowing, while also working on borrowing related to this year's plan for the new allocation of the Public Works in Black's Harbor. Year-end activities, many year-end activities were completed by staff such as annual reports and inventory and a mandatory survey that we had to submit with StatsCan. Housing development, working on several subdivisions of parcels in Black's Harbor that will lead to tendering RFP of these properties for housing developments. We're also working on several prospective developers in the St. George, Black's Harbor, and Penfield area, and awaiting finalizing development agreements with one developer here in St. George. A number of large parcels of land have come up for sale in the St. George area. Many of these properties pose good development opportunities. EMO, we've completed a post-event wrap-up relating to the December storm that we had with staff from EMO and Public Works and Fire regarding that storm and any understanding of the opportunities and areas of improvement. Work continues on the Eastern Charlotte Emergency Plan, which will be completed this year. Parks and Recreation, work on completing the upgrades for the arena, awaiting a number of contractors to complete their approved work. Planning has also started on several annual events hosted by the municipality. We expect a number of improvements to be made with the following: new stairs of the St. George pickleball tennis courts, relocation of the Black's Harbor playground from Main Street to the area adjacent to the arena, establishing a pitcher's mound here in the St. George ball field, and erecting new basketball backboards and hoops here in the St. George basketball courts. Improvements to Gypsy's Rest this year, restoration work to the former building footprints at the Adventure Lane, former Day Adventure Center, and all the buildings of the former Day Adventure Center have been sold, and we expect the buildings to be removed by late spring. Water, we priced out several improvement projects for Black's Harbor water, as well as expected test wells to be drilled over the coming months for the purpose of finding a sole municipal water source for the Black's Harbor water. In addition, we are also looking at several upgrades to wastewater services for Black's Harbor, such as SLS sewage lift station monitoring and checking the lagoon capacities for the two lagoons of Black's Harbor. Garbage collection, the municipality started reviewing garbage collection, exploring services options. A tender will be produced for collection for 2025 to 2028. In addition, recycle collection will be taken over by Circular Materials in May. And dangerous unsightly properties, two derelict homes were removed in December, and we are filing petitions with the province for reimbursement of those demos. Also, several homes were ordered to be boarded up due to vacancies and derelict status compromising public safety. And that's the General Government Report.
Thank you, Mr. Gedet. Any questions or comments on that report? If not, we're going to move on to seven B, which is the reports, the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. And Mr. Gedet will give those tonight, the first one and the second, the Building and Planning Report, and the Dangerous and Unsightly Properties Report.
Thank you, your worship. So this is the Planning and Building Enforcement Report, prepared by Alex Henderson, Planning Director for the Service Commission. January the 18th, the PRC approved an application for a permanent use subject to terms and conditions, light industrial under the Fundy Bay Rural Plan Regulation. Conditions include limits to the size of the operation, sound transmission, environmental protection, hours of loading, and visual buffers to reduce potential conflicts with nearby residential users. Discussions with the CIO, a potential review of commercial zone in the village of Black's Harbor. That's relating to the Black's Harbor Rural Plan to address the issues of existing nonconforming residential uses in that zone, as well as enhance the commercial character of the village center. We'll bring a future report and draft bylaw with suggestions for amendments to councils for their consideration. Rezoning bylaw of 65 Wallace Cove Road may go to the third reading, and council may make resolutions to enter into development agreement with a developer and to set terms and conditions on the development. Development update, nine building demo permits were issued, value of over $600,000, one zoning confirmation letter sent, approval of legal documents for registration with exemptions to date, two variances or terms of condition approvals for 2024, and three subdivision applications with four building lots and three parcels. Two new dwellings approved for 2024 as well. And there's also an enforcement report here, which we'll get into next.
Any questions or comments on that part of the report? Mr. Gedet, you want to go to the second part?
So just dangerous unsightly, just regards to that, there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. There was nine files that are currently open with the Service Commission, and two of those, there was onsite orders posted, so as I mentioned in my report, some boarding up some homes that were unfortunately derelict or publicly unsafe.
Any questions?
For the month of January 2024, Eastern Charlotte Fire Rescue had a total of 14 calls. I'd like to thank all the members and volunteers. They're doing extensive training this winter on their downtime, which is, they don't have a lot of, but I'd like to thank them for that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Any questions or comments on that? If not, we'll move on to the Public Works Report, and I'll call on Counselor McCrory.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report as written for both Black's Harbor and St. George.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that report? If not, we'll move ahead with the parks. And this is the new one tonight, folks, seven E. This is the first one for Eastern Charlotte. And tonight, Counselor Hat has the honor of giving us the first report for Parks and Recreation.
History-making, huh?
Yeah, it is.
So this was prepared by Drew Dugan, the foreman for Parks and Recs, so kind of the January report of where he was. So daily building and equipment safety logs were done, ice maintenance done daily, general maintenance, cleaning, and checks on in the arena. Zamboni checks and maintenance as needed, also monthly checks of the water system for the condenser water to make sure it was sent to the lab for testing. And same deal with our cooling tower, make sure it's inspected and the reports are done for it. Continuing of upgrading of lighting and heating going on at the arena. The new dehumidifier has arrived, scheduled install date with Simco. I don't think that's been nailed down yet with them, but I know they'll be coming shortly to close up for the season, so. Contacted East Coast Air and put new duck work in when we install the dehumidifier. Waiting on quotes for the heat pump for the arena lobby and dressing rooms and gym area, so not all of it that we're doing, but we did apply for funding a while ago for the one in the lobby to get rid of the old noisy heater that most people know. Viking Fire came in, they had to do some sprinkler heads and also did some that were outdated. The new truck is here for Parks and Recs on the road, new tires, back rack, beacon lights are all installed on it. Hot water tanks were replaced in the basement of the arena, that's the domestic hot water. Fundy Lady Mariners hosted a tournament, January 5th to 7th. It went well the weekend. Contractors to look at the showers, I know there's been several complaints myself that came in around our showers plugging up, and so we're looking at some kind of different faucets and things that aren't so fine filtration to it probably is a good spot. The water's pretty hard, so. Install new lights, sink faucet in the canteen, replace belts and other repairs to the exhaust fan for the canteen. And exciting news is Andrew Case has a baseball pitching clinic at the old Curling Club side of the arena, had a great turnout. It's called Case Performance, has now booked the gym for winter-spring baseball development program, which he'll be doing six sessions in the coming months. So looking ahead for the coming weeks and months of Parks and Rec, coordinate with Public Works and timeline, install the new basketball nets here in the McAdavis Center, have the new surfaced court that was here last year. Working on relocation of the playground on Main Street, so I guess just a quick thing on that before council decided that we'd move that playground because it's not really in a safe spot. If you go into Black's Harbor, there's Jersey barriers blocking the road from cars being that's gone in there on that corner, so it's not a really safe place for that playground. So we're going to move it down by the arena, closer to where the YMCA is operating too. Looking into possible revamping the beach volleyball court at Canal Beach, and I know between Drew and Kara, they've been contacting different organizations for ball hockey leagues, roller derby's teams, et cetera, to purpose of hosting events, spring and summer inside of the arena when the ice is out, so, great news.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, was the first report for Parks and Recreation for Eastern Charlotte, the very first one, so you can tell your grandchildren, you heard it here first. I'm going to go to thank you, Counselor Hat, and I'm going to ask, any questions or comments on that report? If not, I'm going to go to Counselor Hat again for a community report.
Maybe I should look at some of the two of these together because two of them are actually pretty close, so. So on January 27th, former professional baseball pitcher Andrew Case was in the arena hosting a pitching clinic. Mayor Craig and I had the pleasure to meet both Andrew and his spouse Kelsey. They were so pleased with Eastern Charlotte and the talent that they committed in six more Saturdays to help development of our youth and prep for them coming, the upcoming baseball season. There are still five spaces available for anybody that's interested. Contact Andrew or Kelsey directly at caseproformance@gmail.com, which we'll put a link code on Parks and Rec page for that anyway. February 3rd and 4th, the Groundhog Tournament at the arena. There was a tournament of U9. February 19th, U7 had a day tournament. Congratulations to all those teams who participated, so February is usually our busy month for tournaments, so, great to see. Our second Annual Valentine Social was held Wednesday, February the 14th, at McAdavis Community Center. Thank you to the Fab Five Plus One, caterers, to Mr. Ian Lee and his music students, Michelle, Isaiah, Peyton, and Hunter for the entertainment. I myself was unable to attend, but have been told by many of these that these students were fantastic and represented Fundy Middle High very well. And thank you to everyone who was able to attend and participate. On Monday, February 19th, was Family Day. We trust that we all had a great day spending with our friends and loved ones and family. The Patrick Connors Recreation Complex was a full house of pucks and sticks and free skating. It was great to see it, just like a beehive, full, being used on that day and offered to our community. Also wanted to mention that Black's Harbor Garbage Truck. If anyone's seen it, on our Facebook page has the name of Dunk in front of the passenger side fender. Dunk is in honor of Manford Dunk Cook, who collected the garbage for many years in Black's Harbor. The arena will be closing for the season mid-March, around March 17th is the date. I want to encourage everyone to get out and enjoy the hockey games, skates, pucks and sticks, and any discounted ice rentals that are coming up over the next few weeks, because there will be many other events happening at Patrick Connors Recreation, but the ice will be coming out mid-March. In the month of March, we do have March Break, pucks and sticks and free skating that is coming up, and an Easter Market on March 23rd. For more information that is posted, go to Eastern Charlotte Parks and Rec Facebook page and hit the like button. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hat. Let me just say, it's been great this winter to drive by the arena many, many, many nights and see that place full of vehicles and busy all the time. Compared to a few years ago during COVID, there's nothing going on probably all across the world, but still now I think we really rebounded from that period in time, and this winter is probably one of the busiest times I've seen that arena. So it's great to see all Eastern Charlotte be able to use that building. That's for everybody. As well, I'd like to say that Mr. Lee, Ian Lee, not you, but the, does a fantastic job at the high school here with those students for the music. He had his four of his students here performing for the seniors, and this room was full of seniors that day, and every one of those seniors just loves what those, I say kids, they're, you know, they're young adults, I guess, and they did an exceptional job for the seniors. So Mr. Lee, we're very fortunate to have you in our area teaching our children music, which is something they all love, and we love to hear, so. Any other questions or comments?
Just one note, we did finally, after I think 2018, our team came together to revitalize the arena down there, and I may have talked on this before, but it was an average of 10 hours of rentals that that facility had back then, and as of two weeks ago, we had a 40-hour usage week in that arena, so, you know, I'd like to say that the community is definitely driving that change and keeping us accountable into making that change too, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to eight, which is the financial statement tonight. I'll be looking for a motion that council accept the financial report for January 2024. Counselor Lee?
I move that council accept the financial report for January 2024.
We have a motion on the floor. We need a secondary, secondary Counselor Hat? Great, thank you. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion of accepting the financial report for January 2024 signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. That brings us to old business, and we get a few old business tonight. The first one is the Black's Harbor Bylaw, number Z.2.3, Amendment to the Rural Plan Rezoning, PID 15166721. Now, I just wanted to explain what that rezoning number is, so the people of Black's Harbor would know, will know. It's the old municipal building in Black's Harbor. It was taken over by Connors Brothers, and they're looking for a rezoning. The only change tonight from the original two, and I want to save this out before we go to a motion, the only change that we have in front of us tonight from the original two readings is number two on there. And number two reads, "The amended zoning is applicable only once Public Works operations are relocated from the adjacent property at 73 Wallace Cove Road, PID 15166713." So that motion for the bylaw tonight, that's the only change from the first two readings. So I'd look for a motion for that, if there was a motion tonight. Counselor, yeah, okay. And that is Counselor Dedaracus making the motion, and we need a secondary, Counselor McCrory. Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Hat, you're first.
I have a question. Is there a timeline on that to be moved, or is it just vague for?
The expectation is having works moved this year, 2024, so I would say by the end of this, hopefully by winter of 2024, so this fall.
That's my only concern, is that's a busy area with Public Works coming in and out of both buildings there, and the safety hazard of families being in that close vicinity.
Yep, exactly. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, I got back to you. Excuse me.
Yeah, I support this. It's great to see industry invest in housing for their employees, and since, you know, the local representative, Counselor Adam Hat, supports us, so do I.
Good. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. Next is the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation Deventures. I'm looking for a motion, the clerk, I don't know if I want to read, I get the motion, the person to make the motion to read all that. Counselor Lee, maybe you go ahead with that. I won't bore everybody twice.
Be it resolved that the clerk and/or treasurer and/or mayor be authorized to issue and sell to the New Brunswick Municipal Financial Corporation a local government of Eastern Charlotte debenture in the principal amount of $337,000 on such terms and conditions as are recommended by the New Brunswick Municipal Financial Corporation, and be it resolved that the local government of Eastern Charlotte agree to issue postdated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as and when they are requested in payment of principal and interest charges on ministerial order 20-0070, authorized by the resolution of council on June the 21st, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, but Counselor Lee, I need a secondary for that. Counselor Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Dedaracus, you're first.
I just want to confirm, so this is for paving for Hillside subdivision, the air packs, the recreational truck, and for the repair line for Riverview Avenue?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, just so I can just clarify that, you know, council has to make a motion to make an application for borrowing, and then it makes an application to actually issue on that borrowing authority, so once we receive authority from the minister or ministerial order to do the borrowing, it still needs to have council approval, so that way there, we do have, as a municipality, sometimes we have opening authorities to borrow, but, you know, it removes that ability from, you know, staff just to suddenly start going and borrowing on authorities that has to come back to council.
Counselor Hat, you're next. Oh, okay, I thought you, yeah, good. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. That moves us to, change the page here, sorry. Nine C, the Project Village Development Agreement. I'll be looking for a motion tonight for rescinding of a motion of September 20th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Hat, you're making the motion?
Yeah, so on nine C1.
Yeah.
Lewis Connors Lane Project, I move that council rescind the motion of September 20th, 2023, to approve the development agreement of Lewis Connors Lane Project by Project Village.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a secondary for that. Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on the, question or comment on the motion? Nope, none, okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. Nine C1, I'm looking for a motion for rescinding of a motion, again, of September 20th. Counselor, Counselor Hat?
So Willow Court Project, I move that council rescind the motion of September 20th, 2023, to approve the development agreement of Willow Court Project by Project Village.
We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Hat. I need a secondary for that motion. Counselor Thompson? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. Number 10, new business. I'm going to go to Jason, Mr. Gedet, to explain these items.
Thank you, worship. So this would be for Public Works wastewater and water upgrades for the water systems, primarily for Black's Harbor, of course. So this would be a motion to take $62,000 from the Black's Harbor Utility Reserve to fund these projects to improve the water system for Black's Harbor, and in amongst them, we have a turbidity meter for the farm reservoir, we have a skate upgrade for the French Village Water Tower. Just on that point, right now, we have no way remotely to check that water level with the exception of an analog gauge in a building, so this will be bringing these water systems up to date. Skate sewage lift station upgrade at the Mill Brook, Mill Stream, Sturgeon Cove, Black's Harbor Reservoir Cleaning, so that's the, actually the cleaning of the French Village Water Tower. The Black's Harbor Lagoon sludge study, so that will understand the capacity that we have in those two lagoons of Black's Harbor, and a sewage lift station winch system for pulling out motors and pumps from the sewage lift stations that we have. So that totaled just about $59,428, so just for any types of increases of quotes, it'd be for $62,000.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for council to utilize $62,000 from the Black's Harbor Utility Reserve Fund for projects which Mr. Gedet just explained, so I need a motion for that. Counselor Thompson?
I move that council rescind the project, and why is our utility reserve required to be moved?
Great, thank you, Counselor Thompson. I need a secondary for that. Counselor McCrory? Question or comment on the motion? Counselor Hat, you're first?
Yeah. So I would assume this is the first step in trying to get our water quality back under control in Black's Harbor.
That's correct.
Because right now, it's deplorable, to be quite honest. I know myself, I live there, and I know Mayor Craig lives there, and I feel bad every day when I look at my tub full of water, so I hope that the flushing of the water tower definitely helps with this, so.
That was a good question, Counselor Hat, very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. Ten B, is the traffic study for two intersections in St. George, that's in your packet, and that's for information only, that's for council to read when you have some time. It shows the completion of the business conducted by council. No motions required for that tonight, but you have that in your package. Counselor Hat, yeah?
So I'm assuming after we have time to review them, that we'll come back for public review of them?
That's correct, and you know, with now, this going to council tonight, this study that is made public, if you can take a look at it, and anyone requesting this, see where the money was used to study these two intersections, can take a look at that study as well.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to ten C, Letters to the Minister of Environment and Local Government. Ten C1 is a letter to the Minister of Local Government, it's a meeting request for, a sec, that council send a letter to the Minister of Environment and Local Government to request a formal meeting to discuss council's request to change Eastern Charlotte's local government classification to a town. I need a motion for that tonight? Counselor Hat?
It's okay, I'm going to amend this a little bit.
Okay, sure, yeah.
I move that council send a letter to the Minister, Environment, of Local Government, and our local MLA to request a formal meeting to discuss council's request to change Eastern Charlotte's local government classification to a town.
Great, so, yeah, excellent. I've added that to the motion. I need a secondary for that. Counselor Dedaracus? Question or comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's pass unanimously. A sec. That brings us to ten C2, Letter to the Minister of Local Government, Meeting Request for the Black's Harbor Water System. Counselor Hat, would you like to make that motion tonight?
I will, and I'll be adding the same amendment.
Okay.
I move that council send a letter to the Minister of Local Environment and Local Government and to our local MLA representation to request a formal meeting to discuss the Black's Harbor water study and system.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hat. Secondary for that would be Counselor Great, thank you, Counselor Hat. Secondary for that would be Counselor McQuarrie, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. For the folks in Black Harbor, there's a lot of motions here tonight for the Black Harbor Water System. Just want people in Black Harbor to take note of that tonight. Ten C two is a letter to the Minister of Transportation, a request for a traffic study for Route 172 Bag Bay. I look for a motion for that. Counselor Thompson, would that be your, your request tonight? You go ahead?
"I move that council send a letter to the Minister of Transportation to request the completion of a traffic study at the intersection of Route 172 and Bag Bay Loop Road in Bag Bay."
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. I need a secondary for that motion. Counselor Hat, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Ah, here's history tonight. We got, this is a new history motion here tonight, folks. You guys are here first to see this. Are we getting, we'll get the ratings up for the next meeting, yeah? Next, ten, ten D, municipal logo. This is, this is history. This is the logo for Eastern Charlotte. We didn't, we don't have a logo for Eastern Charlotte. So, council got together this past month, I happened to miss that meeting, and while it's gone, they made some major decisions. And this is the, the one that, maybe I should wait for the, I'll wait for the motion before I show it, maybe that'd be, I mean, do you want me to show, show it off now? Okay, I gotta see. This is what the council has, has chosen, as, can, can the camera reach, get in there? You don't have to get me in there, just get the logo. You got a nice sharp picture of that? Okay, beautiful, excellent. So, what I need to, to formally adopt this logo tonight, I need a motion from the floor. Now, remember, whoever makes the motion, this goes down in history. So, who's going to make that motion? Counselor, Counselor, I see Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Hat, a hat, seconded. Question or comment on this, having this as the logo for Eastern Charlotte tonight? All those of, sure, go ahead.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a great logo. That's, that's all I have to comment.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this motion?
I think, I think a comment should be that the design was done in-house by a very qualified person that we have, and his name is Chris McKinnon, and I think he's done a great job. I mean, we all know, we live in a fishing town and a forestry town, so I, I think it's a great amendment, so, and great, and great job.
Don't brag him up too much.
I will brag him up, he did a good job.
So, that is the logo we're voting, or you guys are voting on tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That was history, folks, read there. Correspondence tonight, we have a letter from Sally Duncan, from Mulray Gates tonight. Counselor Dedarakis, could you help me out tonight? Would you like to read that out tonight?
With pleasure.
My voice, I started to lose my voice a little bit, it's a long letter. But I think it should go out to the public tonight.
Sure.
So, I'm not just going to say we have a letter, I'd like for it to be actually read.
So, this is from Sally Duncan of St. George, "To the mayor and council, my name is Sally Duncan, I would like to make a few requests regarding the upkeeps of the mosaic on the gates of the River Trail in St. George. In case you are unaware of this mosaic art, here is a brief history. Ten years ago, I was approached to beautify the gates of each end of the trail that starts at the North Street and ends at the Day Adventure Center. This was a venture supported by the town of St. George and many citizens. Each panel was paid by, by an individual, family, or group, and some by the town. Since then, I have been trying to keep it as fresh as I can, as our climate is not kind to this type of outdoor feature. The following is a small list of requests to help keep the mosaic gates maintained to be enjoyed by the public. One, it would be an advantage to erect a small sign at the corner of the road by the credit union indicating the trail and the mosaics. I was promised this 10 years ago by the Business Improvement Association at the time, but this never happened. I know that the few tourists who have discovered the gates are very impressed. Actually, many people in this area have no idea of its, of its existence. Two, all year, I filled, I filled the see-through plastic letter boxes at the mosaic brochures explaining each mosaic and the sponsor. The town office prints these out for me. But last year, at the Day Adventure Center end, the box was missing, and although I did ask frequently, it has never been replaced. Looking at the North Street entrance, I see that the current box had, there has been damaged. Therefore, it would be great to have these replaced. Three, as this is an art feature, and people like to take photographs, I'm very disappointed that on each end, at each end, a sign has been attached to the gates regarding picking, picking up after one's dog. These signs would detract from any artwork and certainly do not, certainly do at the gates, and will be front and center at, on any photographs taken. I am sure these dog signs could be placed somewhere else on the trail. I have made this request in person at the town office a few times already. Four, at the Day Adventure Center Mosaic, on the side closest to the river, it is very overgrown. I'm wonder if it is possible to move the few trees and bushes that tend to cover the mosaics in the summer. I don't think this would take long or detract from the area. My husband and I have been, my husband and I have had to cut the foliage back ourselves at times, and I think we're getting a bit too old for that. As mentioned earlier, this project was supported by the people of St. George and some businesses. Many of the panels show the history of some families in the town, and it would be great to keep this public art project in good shape for years to come."
Great, thank you very much, Counselor Dedarakis. There's no motion required on that tonight, it's addressed to mayor and council, but issues would be the CEO and Works Forum in responsibility to work, work on that.
Yeah, okay. And just, you know, with the four items raised there, should be no issue with, with addressing those within the few next coming months. I mean, changing, changing some of the signs, I agree, certainly taking that sign of fixing, of, of picking up after your dog, I guess, on those mosaics was certainly an oversight. So, we'll, we'll relocate those, and, and the letter boxes, I believe we actually have letter boxes already to go in the, at the municipal hall. So, these four items, we'll, we'll definitely be addressing them.
Counselor, Counselor Hat?
I'll definitely add them to my recreation side of it to follow through, too, so.
Thank you.
I know Jason will look after them, but.
Nope, that's, that's good, that way, we don't really require a motion tonight. The next letter we have tonight is from Beatrice Dory from Sunset Drive, and she has a lot, a lot of concerns about Sunset Drive. I'm not going to read into that letter, basically because it's not a municipal street, but I need a motion, that, that letter, for action for that letter tonight.
I'll make the motion.
Counselor, yeah, would you like to read that out for me? Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Eleven B?
Eleven B?
Yeah.
Um, "I move that the letter be sent," oh, no, eleven B.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. Okay. "I move that the letter be, the letter of reply be sent to Ms. Dory with information regarding the specific situation of Sunset Drive, and recommendations on how to address the needs of the residents."
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, but Counselor Dedarakis, we need a secondary for that. Counselor, we've got all kinds. Counselor Lee, I saw first. Question or comment on the motion? All those, oh, Counselor Hat?
So, this is a private drive, right?
That's correct, yeah.
That's the reason behind it, it's not a municipal road, it's not a provincial road?
Yeah, that's correct, that's right. That's why I didn't get into all the specifics of it tonight, because it really is not our, our responsibility at this point. But we can probably help, I guess, in the letter to kind of give them some direction of what they could do as, as a group over there. Okay, we have motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Eleven C is Anglophone South School District Inspire Awards. It's been ten of these many years, and it is great. Every, every school in the district is recognized, students from every school is, is brought to the forefront, and, and what, and it really, really shows that these students really tried hard and to get these awards. So, I'll go to council for a motion at this point. Go ahead, Counselor Hat?
"I move that council make a donation of $200 to," oh, sorry. "I'll make a motion that council make a donation of $400 to Anglophone South School District to sponsor a student for annual Inspire Awards."
Great, thank you, Counselor Hat. That is, I need a secondary for that. Counselor McQuarrie? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And that's passed unanimously. We just had to do the math there. Okay, this brings us to, folks, to the public, oh, the public presentation appearances. Please note, under Bylaw number EC dash zero one, section 71, "Members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction." Now, just remember, this is not a question and answer session, this is just five minutes to express your opinion, and please try to keep it civil, no unfounded accusations towards council or staff during this time. And I just ask you to give your name and civic address when you, when you, when you go to, when you go to the microphone.
Raymond Hall, on the Wake Mount Pleasant Road, or formerly known as Poorhouse Hill, Jason.
Welcome, welcome.
Uh, two things. I'm wondering if there's been any conversation as to, I brought it up before, about 30-day limit on when you do any repairs on roads, if you could have something repaired, or the roads fixed, like a water main break or something. And the second thing is the two-stop signs at the bottom of the hill. Sam's brought it up three, or four, or five, six, seven times, if they could be straightened up, because they are, when you do come down by Gifford, you can't see tunnel, if they'd be straightened up, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Raymond. Any other people tonight?
Paul Leland, nine one five, Mass Green Road.
Nice to have you here tonight, Paul, thank you for coming.
I had a question about who maintains the viewing area at the water, at the fish ladder. There's windows down there that are like glass for an aquarium, and there's paint that's been thrown on them, and they're also leaking. I mean, it's very, to have a fish ladder is something very unique to St. George, and should be advertised more. So, I operate a campground in Caithness, and I send a lot of people up there, and they're, you know, feel that it should be a little better maintained. It also would be nice whether owned, whether they could have a, a camera or something down there, remote camera, that we could look at to see what fish are running, to see if people want to go up and look at that. Also, there's a sign right on the gate that's outside that, that actually says fish ladder, and directly next to it is a bigger sign that says no trespassing. Now, there's no trespassing sign, I realize this is for the dam, but they should be able to separate those two signs, because they have people that go up there, they say, oh, there's a fish ladder there, but you can't go to it, because there's no trespassing there. So, I don't know whether this is an Irving property, or whether it's a town property, or, but whether the town can see if that could be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Gedet, so there's something we can look at, absolutely.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, going once, Counselor Rubin, you're not, not coming, no, you're, you're good and late? If, no, I'm going twice, going three times, thank you very much. So, that moves us on to the end of the night here, I believe. Statements by members of council, I'll go to Counselor Hat first.
Well, first off, I want to say thank you to everybody that's came here tonight. I know, and I want to say thank you to Mr. Hall on, on Facebook of making comment, too, because there has been some nasty stuff on Facebook lately, and we all know it, and it's, it's, don't like to throw mud, and don't like, but, I mean, everybody can come here, hear the same message, doesn't have to be rumor. I just want to say thank you, Raymond, for that comment, it was greatly appreciated. So, my other thing is, is with the motions tonight, I hope, and I use the word hope, that we can get our water quality in Black Harbor back to snuff, because it's deplorable. And, and, and I, I don't have a real good sense that anybody knows where the problem is coming from today. And, and I get it, that it's a private slash public water system, and our hands are tied with stuff. But as a homeowner down there, and a representation of Black Harbor, it's, it's deplorable, really. You know, today, it's 2024, we don't have to have water like that. So, I just want to say, as your representation, I'm trying my best, and I am sorry for your water quality. I am very sorry.
Counselor Dedarakis?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with what Counselor Hat said. I just want to remind residents that I am always approachable and available to listen to any questions or concerns regarding St. George or Eastern Charlotte. If you don't feel comfortable coming here and speaking at the, speaking at the mic, you can always reach out to me via email or any other, any of the other counselors here. In my view, adequate government depends on communication, and I don't want to pretend that I know everyone's needs or everything that happens, which is why I rely on you to let, tell us and let us know. And other news, some exciting news, the past few councils have worked alongside Habitat for Humanity in hopes of getting this project started. And I'm pleased to say that this year, the CAO and I have worked to ensure that this becomes a reality. And it looks like building will start in the spring. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Dedarakis. Counselor Thompson, you're next?
This is in regard to the memorial benches. On the 14th of February, a resident of Ward Two filled out the online form for memorial benches. It was immediately refused for, for the reason, the property is not on, the bench would not be on municipal property, but this was not conveyed on the online form. Since then, the form has been updated. After amalgamation, we were supposed to be Eastern Charlotte on an equal playing field. For the summer of '23, the municipality placed a picnic table on private property in Ward Six. There was no issue from council or the CAO on this subject. It was the right thing to do for the community. So, my question is, what is the difference between a wooden picnic table on private property in Ward Six, and a community memorial bench in Ward Two, for the community to use? This area where the bench would go, they have a guestbook, there's people from all over the world have been there, anybody can have a look at it if they want to. All over the land, Canada, Quebec, Ontario, British Columbia, North Carolina, Maryland, Germany, Vietnam, and Indonesia. It's just the right thing to do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Thompson. I'm going to go to Counselor McQuarrie. Counselor Lee?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to recognize Joan Craig here tonight. She's volunteering her time on the recently formed Committee for Age-Friendly Communities, and I'm hearing great things about what you're doing, Joan, with your committee. And if anyone's, doesn't understand what that is, just go online and Google it. It's, it's a worldwide thing now for communities to get a designation in age-friendly communities, and that means that we're, we're working towards keeping our seniors in the community and in their homes for their whole life. And it's not just for older people, it's for everyone, because it's, there's disabled people and people who are challenged that need to move around communities with transportation, and, you know, wheelchair walks, or whatever you have you. And it will be great to get this committee started, and Joan, thank you for that, and the rest of your committee.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Lee. I'm going to go to Counselor McKay.
I also want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I just want to say, I've been approached by several people over the last little while on why we have so many closed-door meetings, and that their fear that we're not being transparent, and that maybe some things are being done underhanded, or whatever. The reason we have closed-door meetings is either there's personnel issues, land issues, or something of that sort that can't be discussed publicly. And with us being in a room together and discussing things, to have an open door and then a closed-door meeting, we do, we are fearful that maybe something may be said, not thinking about people sitting behind us, or whatever, that something may be said that we're going to regret later, that should have been in a closed door. So, those are the reasons we have closed-door meetings. I myself, and I can attest for everybody sitting here on this council, we are being completely forthright and open with the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. At this point, is the motion for adjournment, can I count, count on you, Counselor McKay, for that?
You can.
Okay, thank you very much.